Good evening. I'm Mark Cogler, Chair of the Parcel Robles Planning Commission. And I'd like to welcome you to our meeting of August 24th, 2021. To start our meeting, we're going to call this to order. A couple of notes. We start with some bad news and some good news. The bad news is we're virtual meetings again due to health concerns in the community. The good news is we did virtual meetings for about 15, 16 months in the past. So I think we're all pretty good at it, some of the glitches of today aside. But we will get through all of this once again. I would ask that if you're a participant or a visitor, that you make sure your microphone is muted, please, during the course of the meeting unless you are talking. And so with that, I will officially call this meeting to order. And I have to provide a bit of information. Due to the COVID-19 emergency and is allowed by the Governor's Executive Order N-2920, which allows for a deviation of teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act, planning commission meetings will be held by teleconference only until further notice. The video stream of planning commission meeting presentations will be live streamed and available to play later on YouTube by accessing the following link: Rather than attending in person, project applicants and members of the public must call 805-865-7276 to participate via phone. The phone line will open just prior to the start of the meeting at 6:30 PM. Or written public comments can be submitted via email to planning@prcity.com. Written comments received prior to 12 noon on the day of the meeting will be posted as an addendum to the agenda online at wwwprcity.com/AgendaCenter/Planning-Commission-5. That's the numeral five. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item. So with that, our meeting is now called to order. And we'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask Commissioner Gibson, if you would be kind enough to lead the group. Lead is a bit of a misnomer. And again, we ask you to keep your microphones muted and participate. Otherwise, we get a lot of reverberation. So lead us if you would, please, Commissioner Gibson. Are you there, Commissioner Gibson? Am I still being heard?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right. Ty, since you spoke up, you get to be the guy now to do the pledge.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Gibson. Or Gibson. Christiansen. Okay, with that, staff, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kovarubius?
Present.
Commissioner Christiansen?
Present.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Gibson?
Here. I apologize, my cursor decided not to work and I couldn't unmute myself.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Here.
Commissioner Neal?
Here.
Chairperson Cogler?
Here.
All present.
Okay, thank you. Staff introductions, please.
Yes, Warren Fries, Community Development Director. With me tonight is Lori Wilson and Jessica Ferguson.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is general public comments regarding matters not on the agenda. This is the opportunity for anybody to comment on something that, again, is not specifically listed on our agenda this evening. Are there any?
No, sir, there are not.
Thank you, Jessica. Item F on our agenda, Agenda Items Proposed to Be Tabled or Rescheduled. We do have one item, the Hotel Parcel Robles, which was on last time and was deferred to this evening. We do have a recommendation from staff to continue this item to a non-certain future agenda and renotice the public hearing. Is there any staff comment on this item before we ask for motion?
Commissioner Cogler? This is Commissioner-
Commissioner Neal, yes.
I need to step away from this item? Or do I have a business conflict?
Very good, thank you.
Staff is still working with the applicant to get this ready for hearing. We're not exactly sure of the date. That's why we're recommending that we just renotice this item.
Very good, thank you, Warren. Could we get a motion, please, to continue this item to a non-certain future agenda? And then it will be renoticed as a new public hearing.
I move.
I second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Christiansen, a second from Commissioner Davis. Is there any discussion on this? If not, will you please call a roll?
Yes, Commissioner Christiansen?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Kovarubius?
Aye.
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Chairperson Cogler?
Aye.
Motion passes, 6-0.
Thank you. As we move into the public hearings portion of the agenda, I now would like to recuse myself from the first item of public hearing on the variance due to avoid any conflict of interest with a potential business connection. And accordingly, I would ask Commissioner Neal, if he would please take this portion of the meeting and be kind enough to inform me that after action has taken place. And I'll rejoin you. Thank you.
Absolutely. So tonight, item G, Public Hearings. The Agenda Item 2 is a side setback variance, VAR 21-01, comma, P 21-0068, 191 via Magnolia. Applicant is Vince Vanderlip. And the request is to reduce a side yard setback from 10 to 5 feet for the construction of a new 3,326 square foot, two-story, single-family residence. Staff? Report, please.
So Lori, I did get the PowerPoint up. If you want to use, have me run it.
I'm fine with running it, but thank you. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Neal. Good evening, members of the commission. This is Lori Wilson. And I'll be providing the report tonight for the variance request on Magnolia. The photo that we're looking at right now is the lot. I'll be providing the- This is the photo of the area that we're going to be talking about tonight. The oak tree that you can see in the photo. Designing on the lot of the challenge that we're going to be talking about. This is the topography of this lot. Also, because of the challenge as it begins-
Hey Lori, can you hang on a sec? We've got an echo.
Oh, sure.
Hey Lori, can you hang on a sec? We've got an echo. Hey Lori, can you hang on a sec? We've got an echo. Hey Lori, can you hang-
If it helps for troubleshooting, we were not hearing the echo in teams.
We got it resolved. Thank you so much, Lori. If you wouldn't mind starting over? Okay, so it sounds okay now? Yes, thank you so much. Okay, no problem. So I was just touching on just kind of the lot that we're going to be looking on tonight and some of the challenges with it. The first being that the oak trees that you see in this photo right now make designing on this lot a challenge, as well as the topography of the lot, as it does begin to slope down rather significantly towards the rear of the lot. So the request we'll be discussing tonight is to reduce the side yard setback along the western property line from 10 feet to 5 feet. And this is in order to construct a custom home that Mr. Vanderlip has designed, which would reduce both grading and oak tree impacts. A variance is requested or needed in order to permit minor adjustments to the code when there's special circumstances on a parcel. On this particular parcel, that's going to be the constraints of the steep topography and the oak trees. You can see the site that we're talking about tonight outlined in red here. And this neighborhood is just north of Union Road. And it's one of the few remaining undeveloped lots in the neighborhood. Mr. Vanderlip designed many of the homes in this neighborhood, including the one that you see just directly to the west of this site. So the building envelope for Lot 1 was established with a planning commission approval of tract 2620. The approval also included the removal of three oak trees that have since been removed from the site. You can see those there marked off with those green Xs. So this lot's already received approval to work within this envelope that you see outlined in orange while preserving the remaining oak trees. The home that's being proposed does remain within the confines of this approved area. However, they're requesting this variance in order to preserve those remaining trees as originally proposed. If the home had to be adjusted further to the east to meet that 10-foot setback, that would result in further impacts. So as I mentioned, Mr. Vanderlip designed many of the other homes in this neighborhood, including the home that you see here shown to the west of the site, 189 via Magnolia. And when he designed this home, there was a distance of roughly 10 and 1/2 feet provided from the property line on the east side of the house adjacent to 191 via Magnolia. So if you're able to see that on your screen there. So right here is the 10 feet 6 inches approximately. So if this variance was approved, that would allow for a total of 15 feet 6-inch setback between the two homes. The new residence is also designed so that the front elevation that faces via Magnolia is one story. Then as the lot slopes downward towards the rear of the lot, the residence transitions to two stories. So that red line there is depicting where the home begins to transition from a single story to a two-story. So these elevations will also demonstrate how from via Magnolia, the home will appear as a single-story home. This is the south elevation. At the top of the slide is the view from via Magnolia. And then below is elevation shared with the closest neighbor to the west. And again, it's just depicting where it begins to transition from that single story to two stories. So alternatives to approving this variance would be meeting the 10-foot setback requirement, which would result in further impact to the oak trees. Mr. Vanderlip is on the line with us tonight, too. And I think he can certainly go into a little bit more detail as what those impacts might look like. Another alternative is, of course, redesigning the proposed house plans. Staff's recommendation is that the commission approve the reduced setback to allow for construction of the residence as proposed, being that it would reduce grading and oak tree impacts. So with that tonight, the options before the commission are to adopt draft resolution A, approving the reduced setback based on the setback modification, reducing grading and impacts to oak tree number seven. Amend the above-listed action. Refer back to staff or DRC for additional analysis or make findings to deny the application. And that concludes staff's report tonight. And happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Lori. I'll turn to the commissioners for questions. And I'll try to do it alphabetically. Commissioner Christiansen, do you have any questions?
Just out of curiosity, I drove through the neighborhood today. I was looking at it. Is there, has this been something that was done in the past on any of the homes that are there?
Not to my knowledge. I believe this is the first variance request in this neighborhood.
Is the entire, like even the homes across the street from this particular property, are those actually, they would require a 10-foot setback normally?
Normally for a single-story home, it's a 5-foot setback on one side and 10 on the other. For a two-story residence, that's when it increases to the 10-foot setback. So I'm not 100% sure if there's, you know, which homes are two-story in that direct neighborhood and may have that additional setback required of them. Mr. Vanderlip may be able to answer that a little more detail.
I think you answered my question. I just wanted to confirm that that was the case. So, thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions for me.
Commissioner Kovarubius?
Thank you. I also visited the site today. And Vince, thank you for putting those stakes up. Very helpful. I don't know if you built or if you constructed the 187 via Magnolia, but I noticed, at least visually, that home has what appears to be very similar to what you're proposing. And generally, I don't have any concerns or issues with what is being requested. So I don't have any other further comments.
Commissioner Davis?
Hi. I was on DRC, so I had a chance to look at this project as it's presented. And I don't have any further questions. I think they were answered at the DRC level. I think the graphic was very helpful, Vince. So thank you for that. And no questions.
Commissioner Gibson?
I also drove by the house, took a look at it today after receiving an email letting us know that the stakes were there, which, again, I also found very helpful. So thank you, Mr. Vanderlip. Just for disclosure, I ended up being there the same time as Commissioner Kovarubius. And we had noted, I believe, the house he was talking about to the two houses to the west that looked like had a very similar step-down design where the front was one story and the rear was two stories. And based upon what I'm reading and seeing that there's similar-style houses very close to this proximity, I really don't have any questions or concerns on this project.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Jorgensen?
No questions.
Okay, well, thank you. I, too, was on DRC and had most of my questions answered. So to open the public hearing now and like to hear from Mr. Vanderlip, if he would like to say something?
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Well, we can, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mike keeps getting muted, though. So just in case, I think maybe you guys have the ability-
Just to say that, Mr. Vanderlip, we're having a hard time hearing you. So maybe you can start again?
Yeah, is that any better there now?
It seems to be, yes, thank you.
Okay. Well, first off, thank the commission for considering this variance. I do appreciate that. This first question I really have, though, is why am I the only one with my photograph up on or my camera turned on? Are you guys not able to? It's always really nice to see everyone's faces. But is a technical difficulty preventing that from happening?
I think we have, over the past 15 months, done this without our cameras on.
Okay, very good. So to go right into this, first off, I did have a question for Lori. When she mentioned the, just to clarify, the 5-foot setback and the 10-foot setbacks actually are code-compliant with a single story. And Lori, when you go to the second story, do both the first floor and the second floor have to comply to the 10-footers? The first floor can be 5 feet? And then it just steps back to 10 feet on the second story? Just as a clarification.
That's correct, yeah. So the first floor, the first story could remain at 5 feet. And then you could step back the second story to meet that 10-foot requirement.
So then I guess, just to clarify, what my variances requesting is, because currently, the house, the single-story house would comply. The requirement would be to reduce the upstairs to accommodate that code requirement. And Lori, do you have the floor plan? Does everyone have a copy of the floor plan there? Or can we go to that?
I don't have it as part of the slide, but it was provided as part of the staff report.
So, and I guess, just to summarize that, the downstairs is actually being driven by the upstairs, not the other way around. So the upstairs really works the way it is to fit between the trees and give the rooms the ample size they need for that neighborhood. And so the downstairs really is just carrying the upstairs. So it's really difficult for me to reduce the right-to-left footprint of the upstairs without really impacting the rooms. So that's why I requested the variance. I could, when I met out there with Darren and Lori, we did review trying to spin the house to the east. And there's actually, the front trees are fine. It's just the back corner oak trees. There's an oak tree right there by the master bedroom that would be seriously impacted, more so than it is now. Right, you can see that there. It's tree number six, I believe. I can't really see that. But it's the green one, just adjacent to the master bathroom. So when I had the arborist out there, we did design the house with that 25-foot percent impact onto that tree with the use of caissons in the root zone. So to go 5-foot closer would not only impact the root zone, but the tree would need to be trimmed almost straight up to accommodate the roof line there. So it just didn't seem like, the variance seemed like a much better option, given the fact that I had the 15-6 between the neighbors. And as the chairman, I think, pointed out, and Robert Care Rubius did also, that I did actually, when I planned this project, I had planned on Lot 1 being back of Lot 2, down the hill. Lot 2 being close to the street. Then Lot 3, the one that you had noticed with the downstairs, was back away from, so the houses weren't in a straight line. And I didn't really consider the impacts of the two-story setback. It was really just to keep the houses themselves from being side-by-side and impacting each other. And ultimately, this plan has somewhat come to fruition if this house goes the way it is. So that's really what drove most of this, in addition to the trees up front. So with that, you can kind of see where I've gotten ultimately. And I'm sure happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions of Mr. Vanderlip? Seeing none. Jessica, do we have any callers on this item?
No, sir, we do not.
Great. So with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for further discussion. Any commissioners have any further discussion or a motion potentially proffered?
I move that we approve this draft resolution A. Option 1.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Commissioner Kovarubius.
Perfect, thank you. Any further questions? Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Mr. Price, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Christiansen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kovarubius?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Neal?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0 with Commissioner Cogler abstaining for a conflict.
And I have just texted Chairperson Cogler, so I hope he will be rejoining us soon.
I am rejoining now. I got your text, Joel. Thank you for bringing me back.
Thank you.
Okay, with that item taken care of, we'll move on in the agenda to discussion items. And we have at least one listed tonight, update on the downtown parklet program.
Yes, so the downtown parklet program continues to evolve. At the last council meeting, there was a report to the city council. And at that point, there was a report from the downtown parking commission that had been tasked with reviewing the impact that parklets have on downtown parking supplies and availability. The recommendation from the parking commission was that parklets do have a negative effect on the supply of downtown parking and that they are inconsistent with the currently adopted policies for maximizing downtown parking. That was the extent of the parking commission's recommendation. They left it up to the city council to determine if they were still appropriate to move forward with parklets. Originally, the city council had given direction that the existing temporary parklet program was to end on October 31st of this year and that the city would remove all the parklets beginning in early November. There was some discussion at the council meeting with the recent increase in COVID cases again, whether maybe extending the temporary program further may be warranted. There was a lot of discussion about that, no formal resolution. The mayor also did raise some questions about the feasibility and desirability of a permanent program. In the end, the council decided to basically continue the item to the next council meeting, which is on September 7th, to discuss this item further. So there was no action formally by the council other than to continue. This will be re-agendized. There's a new staff report being prepared. And this will be revisited by the city council on the September 7th agenda.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for staff on that item?
You know, I have a question. I do have a question, Commissioner Cogler. Warren, at what point do you think the planning commission will have an opportunity to review design, should they move forward? Would that be after the council's policy decision? Or will we see something proposed before it goes?
So the planning commission would be involved if we move forward with a permanent program, because a permanent program will require some sort of design standards. And the planning commission most likely be the body that would be reviewing them for consistency with the design standards. But that would be dependent on the decision to actually create a permanent program. So right now, there's no direction to create a permanent program. So at this point, there's no role for planning commission or DRC at this point. Now, that could change. And if it did change, then the development of the program, as well as implementation of the program, we would seek feedback from the planning commission, but we're just not there yet.
Okay, thank you.
Warren, I have one follow-up commission question. This is Commissioner Cogler. Do you see any potential that there would become a dual-track program where the council would have the option to say, we're going to continue the existing temporary program to a certain point in time? But in the meantime, we're going to dig more deeply and quickly into the issue of, is there a permanent home for these? And if so, where do they go and what do they look like?
I think that's kind of the range of options that the council probably will be considering at their next agenda. So I would invite the commission to probably listen in on the next agenda. I think that'll be informative about the direction of the parklet program.
Very good. And you said that was September 7th, correct?
Correct. And that council is also on a virtual meeting format, so it'll be a virtual meeting.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? If not, we'll move on to our next item, which is the consent calendar. We've got two items. We've got Development Review Committee minutes for August 2nd. And we have Planning Commission minutes for August 10th. Are there any questions or comments on those two sets of minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve those?
Commissioner Cogler, this is Commissioner Gibson. I move approval of the Development Review Committee minutes for August 2nd, 2021, and the Planning Commission minutes for August 10th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Gibson, seconded by Commissioner Davis. Any further discussion? If not, please call the roll staff.
Yeah, who was the second again?
Davis.
Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Christiansen?
Aye.
Commissioner Neal?
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kovarubius?
Aye.
Chairperson Cogler?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, our next, we move into item J, Other Reports. We have the first one up being the Housing Constraints Advisory Committee and Zoning Code Update Report. Comments, please, staff.
Yes, so brief update here. We are working with the consultant to move forward with a presentation to the planning commission in September. They have completed their stakeholder interviews of local design professionals and other parties that interface with the zoning code to get preliminary comments about issues with the current code. So we'll be bringing that in forms of a presentation to the planning commission on September 14th.
Sounds good, thank you. Next item is, I should ask, are there any other questions of staff on that item by commission members? If not, we will move on to the next item, which is the Railroad Streetscape Ad-Hoc Committee Report. I'm happy to tell you that the ad hoc committee did meet on Tuesday, August 10th. And I think we had a very productive session. I would ask if either one of my other fellow commissioners who serves on- I would ask if either one of my other fellow commissioners who serves on that group would like to provide a little overview comment on that. That would be Commissioner Christiansen or Commissioner Jorgensen? Otherwise, I will do so.
I have nothing further about it, I think you, you're right, I think we made some good headway.
Go ahead, Mark, I think I did a summary last time.
I think you did as well. Well, I think, just very briefly, we, I think, as much as anything, we were setting some of the project parameters, and I think it was a really good discussion, starting with some basic things that, again, redefining the areas from between 10th and 14th along railroad, so it does bridge 13th and provides a little more of a dynamic with the two different sides of that street. We talked a bit about what ultimately might be city improvements versus private improvements, and what expectations might be within the right of way when a private projects comes forward. And obviously, the interest there is having a palette of materials and design concepts and ideas ultimately in place that would help guide and lead those kind of constructions when they occur. We spent some time talking about site furnishings, and kind of comparing them to what's around the downtown today, and I think agreed on some things that we liked more the bronze, cortein, rusty kind of color in some cases, particularly for like tree grates and the bicycle racks, which would mimic the designs that are there today, which are the circular ones, which we had in a test from staff, or actually worked quite well, which was good to hear. And then we talked about the, some of the other furnishings, the benches and garbage containers and so forth, as perhaps being a little bit Victorian, a little bit ornate, perhaps, what we're looking for here, so there was kind of a call and a request for some of us to take a look at some other site furnishing options, and those have begun. We did kind of agree across the board that we didn't think, that we thought the tree grates themselves would be fine, we didn't promote the thought of tree guards. They seem to cause some problems over the course of time, and they really didn't seem to be necessary. We did spend some time talking about materials, and the desire ultimately to use some type of cobble or some type of pavers to accent certain areas, and we looked at some colors on those, we're going to do some further research on colors. There is a gray charcoal pattern that's been used up by the other side of Roots on Railroad area, and we thought perhaps that might be a little too cool in color for some of the bronzes and more the rust hues that we're going to see in portions of it, so we're going to look at some material colors. We did get, believe it or not, excited a little bit about the truncated domes. For those of you that don't immediately associate what that is, those are the kind of rumble strips that are at the crossing points, which alert pedestrians, wheelchairs, and so forth, that there is a crossing there, and the fact that those don't have to be a bright yellow or some other color, we can actually have those in a more of a natural hue, so long as they provide contrast to the surrounding pavement. It looks like there would be ways certainly to do that. We did begin to dig in a little bit to some of the plant materials that might be ultimately in place, just kind of generally thinking that there would be kind of a choice larger tree and a choice smaller tree. Might be a variety of purple, excuse me, purple robocust, or the larger, maybe a crepe murrell for the smaller, probably more review to be done on that as well. We had a chance, too, to talk about lighting and fixtures, and I think universally, the interest is going with a PGE and E pole and light, at least the light standard itself, so that the maintenance didn't become a city issue in the replacement. We're going to look further into kind of some colors and maybe some add-ons and things that might be able to be done with those. So I think we all felt it was really a good start, I think it's our third meeting, but it really felt like we were kind of rolling up our sleeves and getting into this at this session, and are kind of excited to continue pulling together some initial ideas, to be able to bring those back to the planning commission for some further review. We do foresee sometime when this is progressing to the point where there might be information going to the council, that it might all be a recommendation also to have some additional consulting time, whether it be on lighting and some of the photometrics, or maybe some of the other things. So the group agreed, as I said, to do a little bit of homework on some of the items that I referenced, and then we will be reconvening a new meeting in the near future. So I think that's hopefully a summary of what we did and talked about, and if commissioners have questions of any of the three of us, please feel free to pose those.
So Commissioner Neal, we should probably discuss scheduling a follow-up meeting. I was looking at the calendar, it looks like Thursday, September 9th in the morning is open for meetings, would that work for the ad hoc members?
So Warren, you said Thursday, the 9th of September?
Yes.
I'm available. Is Jorgensen and Christiansen available?
No, I'm not available that morning.
Are you available in the afternoon?
No, I'm out of town from the 7th to the 10th.
So let's look at, how about the following week? Thursday, the 16th at 10:00 a.m., how does that look?
I'm hoping for that one.
That looks good to me, too.
Chairman Kogler? Oops, sorry, I was muted. Think I can make that work, I've got a conflict a bit, but I, seeing that everybody else is available, I'll try to see if I can work around that. Okay, so we'll schedule for 10:00 a.m. on Thursday, September 16th?
And I'm available all day that day, I'm not sure about Commissioner, about the other commissioners, but I'm available anytime that day if it works better for you, Commissioner Kogler.
Afternoon actually does work completely, if that's open for Commissioner Jorgensen.
Yeah, that's fine.
What time?
I'm open in the afternoon, so you can name a time.
2:00 p.m.?
That's okay with me.
Works for me.
Okay, 2:00 on the 16th.
Excellent, we'll send out a notice on that.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, next item is Pasco Rubble Street report.
Hey, we have no updates on that, we are going to focus on getting the railroad streetscape done, and then we'll move on to Pasco Rubble Street.
Very good, thank you. So this one presumably will be kind of inactive for a little while.
Yes.
Okay, looks like you get to give us a COVID-19 update.
Yeah, so, as you've noticed, we've reverted back to virtual meetings, that is because there's been a significant uptick locally in COVID-19 cases, so we've suspended all in-person meetings for commission, council, and other bodies. We're moving back to basically kind of our virtual format for meetings and work programs for the near-term future. We've got the fire chief, who basically is kind of our lead on health issues, coordinated with the county to monitor the situation, and we'll kind of see exactly how things roll out as the situation improves, hopefully, in the near future. We'll move back to in-person meetings of some sort, but we just don't have a time on that right now. So right now, it's back to virtual for the foreseeable future.
Okay, thank you. The item five under J is the DRC rotation schedule. Any problems arisen with anybody's scheduling any of those dates?
This is Commissioner Kovarubius, I actually do have an issue with this coming Monday, the 30th, if somebody would be available to help cover, cover that one?
I'll look at my calendar.
I'm going to look at my calendar, you said the 30th? Yes, Monday, the 30th.
I'm available to do that one.
I'm sorry, I'm not, and Robert, you covered for me, I'm sorry, I wish I could reciprocate.
Oh, that's okay, I appreciate it, Commissioner Kogler, thank you. Yeah, no problem, I will, too, if you can't do it.
Okay, we got a tool list that can take care of it as need be, I'll plan on it, and if anything comes up, I can certainly contact you, Commissioner Christiansen.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
And just a quick note on next Monday's DRC meeting on the 30th, that is going to be a fairly significant meeting, you will be looking at the design guidelines for the landing project, which is that reuse project for the boys' school, so we actually will be issuing a package for review tomorrow to the DRC members.
Okay, very good, that packet be sent out, Warren via email?
Yeah, it'll all be digital.
Okay.
Warren, will that, will that go to all the planning commission members?
Yes, we'll provide copies to all those commissioners.
Thank you.
That would be great, thank you.
All right, we'll watch for that, and that's coming out this week, so, yes. All right, I think that's all of our other reported items, so with that, we'll move into planning commissioner comments, and we can kind of run down the line. Mr. Kovarubius, any comments?
No comments at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Neal, any comments?
Yeah, just that I'm excited that we have a new city manager onboard, and I wish him all the luck.
I'm sure we all echo that same thought. Mr. Christiansen, any comments?
I just wanted to say, to get a chance earlier, I just wanted to say, Laurie, I thought that presentation was great, and that the applicant did a great job, but it really helped having those, those details on the height and some of the side views with that on there, it made, it made it so much easier to make a decision, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jorgensen, comments?
No comments tonight.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Gibson?
I have no further comments, thank you.
All right, and Commissioner Davis?
And I have no comments, thank you.
And I have no comments as well, I would like to thank staff for their perseverance at the beginning of the meeting when things were not totally on, but I know we'll all shake the rust off and get back to it, but thank you for persisting in the effort you did to get us back on the meeting in very reasonable time, so, thanks. Staff comments?
Yeah, a couple of quick updates, so as Commissioner Neal just mentioned, we do have a new city manager, so Ty Lewis became city manager officially yesterday, that was his first day in city hall, so Ty Lewis is our former police chief, as he's, Ty's been with the City of Paso and the police department for, I believe, over 20 years, so Ty's got a tremendous amount of history and background and understanding of the City of Paso Rubbles. I think we're all really excited that he's been appointed to city manager. We are going to have him come meet the planning commission in the near future, so we'll give you opportunity to check in and talk to him as well. And then also staffing-wise, we have a new administrative assistant, I forgot to mention her, but she's on the meeting tonight, her name is Marcy Reynoso, so you'll start to hear from Marcy, she's going to be helping out with Ashley and Jessica and the rest of the planning staff on supporting the planning commission. So welcome, Marcy, welcome, Ty. So the landing project, which is the Paso Rubbles Boys School project, is starting to move fairly quickly through the process now, so this Thursday, the airport commission will be receiving a briefing on the project, so it's an informational item, the airport commission doesn't have a decision-making role in this project, but obviously, the project affects the airport for a number of reasons, so we want to make sure the airport commission is involved in, in the process. So we'll be presenting the project at kind of a high level to them, just so they have the opportunity to kind of understand what's going on and ask questions. And then, as I mentioned, DRC will be reviewing the overall design guidelines on Monday, and then I think two weeks later, we'll bring back to the DRC the development plan for the Phase One, which is the large distribution warehouse project. So DRC is going to be looking at the project probably twice, at least, over the next couple weeks. Future planning commission agendas, we have that continued hotel from tonight, we also have Quickie Car Wash proposed up on 21st Street, so the planners are getting that ready. There's another apartment project on 34th and Park Street that's moving toward a September agenda. Got a couple briefing items coming up, so you'll recall that the city adopts what's called an urban water master plan, it's a state requirement, we have to basically readopt it every five years, so the city council recently approved the latest urban water master plan, we're going to provide a briefing to the planning commission on that in September. Obviously, water is a big issue in the North County, as well as the rest of the state of California, and with the current drought situation, it's even more important, so we want to make sure that the planning commission has access to kind of the latest information in terms of all the water supply projections and analysis, and you also have the opportunity to talk to the public works department that prepares the report about any questions you might have. And you requested, I think at your last meeting, a report on the spaceport application for the city airport, so we'll have that on an agenda, a briefing in September, and then we mentioned zoning code updated in September as well, so I think those are kind of the main things to expect in the next month or so. And then, I don't know, Darren, you have anything else to add?
Nothing else, Warren, that's a full slate we've got coming out of the planning commission's.
Definitely. So that'll conclude staff's report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Chairman, Chairman Kogler, may, may I ask a question of staff?
Absolutely.
Warren, you mentioned that for the, for the landing, that the design guidelines and the development plan would go to DRC, which is the, I understand, standard process, will those then eventually come to the full commission?
Yeah, so basically, what we're doing is starting to put together the entire entitlement package, so part of the final approval that'll go through planning commission and city council will be the master development plan, which is the site plan plus the design guidelines, and then the specific Phase One development plan for the warehouse, so all of that will go through planning commission for final review and recommendation to council. What we're hoping to do with the DRC process is, like with most projects, get a early read on the design and be able to address any concerns the planning commission may have about the direction of the project as early as possible.
All right, thank you very much. And then one just housekeeping question, we have our binders, what would you like us to do with those?
Yeah, if you could just, um, bring them back to city hall, or drop them off at the library, we'll, we'll gather them up.
Chairperson Kogler, I, I'd like to ask a question of staff, too, please, this is Commissioner Christiansen.
Go right ahead.
Warren, so as part of that process for the landing, and I, you, you probably said it, and I might have just missed it, when would the EIR report be done, and will that be something we can get as soon as it's completed, or when, when do they anticipate that will be completed?
Yeah, so, the timeline on the public review draft of the EIR, so the EIR is basically a public disclosure document, so we have to circulate that for the public's review well before we actually schedule any hearings. So right now, our target date is the end of October to release the EIR, the draft EIR for public review and comment. When we release it to the public, we will also release it to the planning commission, so that you have ample opportunity to start your review as well. The planning commission won't be making any comments on the EIR until you get to your public hearing, but we do want you to have plenty of time to review the material. So the plan is, is to release that end of October, there's a 45-day minimum public review period, once that period closes, we then will collect all the comments that were received during the review process, and the consultant will prepare responses to all the comments, and then the EIR plus the response to comments will then come to the planning commission and city council for your consideration when you review the project.
Okay, thank you.
I've got just a couple of quick follow-ups. Warren, regarding packets, the way we were doing it before was simply stopping and picking up at the library the materials, and then inserting them into a binders ourselves, I think we could certainly do that if you still want to do it that way, so it saves us one trip back to the library.
Warren, this is Katie, that would be my preference, and I think Marcy's as well, that they just, we'll just give them the papers to fill their, their binders, so they should keep them.
Okay, and I would recommend do it just the way Katie wants you to do it.
We know it'll be done right if Katie leads the effort, so we'll follow that lead. The other thing is, I was looking at the DRC schedule again, and I had volunteered to take Commissioner Kovarubius's spot on Monday, it, Commissioner Christiansen also piped up just after I did, saying he was available. Actually, Ty, you might be a better person to do that, because I noticed that gives you continuity with September as well, and it sounds like there's going to be another number of things from the landings going to the DRC, that maybe that continuity would be helpful. that's going to the DRC that maybe that continuity would be helpful. So I'd be glad to do it, but I would also defer to you, Commissioner Christensen, if you would rather step in on Monday.
Yeah, that, that's, that's fine with me. I'm happy to do that.
Okay, let's do that. I think that makes some sense.
All right, so we'll switch Christensen for Kovarubius next Monday.
There you go. Okay, have we left anything unsaid this evening or ready for a motion to adjourn? I'll take a motion if somebody would offer one.
I move to adjourn.
A motion from Commissioner Gibson, and I will second that. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 We'll see you all next time.
Have a good night.
Night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.